I don't know if that makes a difference.
We'll go back to outsourcing printing utilities. You want to withdraw your... You rescind the motion?
Yeah, well.
Okay, we'll go back to the outsourcing of printing and mailing.
You want me to rescind my motion?
Lloyd's seconded it.
Okay, you withdraw your second?
Yeah, I'm determined, but I may rescind my motion on the outsourcing.
Yeah, well, I thought we'd just vote on it again. We could bring it back to the... All we have to do is... I entertain a motion to bring it back to the table. You know, we don't always...
Do it however you want. I don't care.
Which we think will bring it back from the table, so we can go on without a second. Second by Councilman Addy. Those in favor say aye. Okay, opposed. And now, we're going to discuss the outsourcing of printing and mailing utilities again. I think we're all in favor of it. Sounds like there's no contracts with it. It's kind of a pay-as-you-go. Questions? No more questions?
Do you want to get that on the record now? Because you said it was turned to Karen, I think.
It's on.
It's been moved by Councilman Richard. We accept or approve the outsourcing of printing and mailing utilities. Second by Councilman Peterson. Any further discussion? If there's any further to say aye. Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is adjournment by Councilman Brown again. Second is aye by Councilman Latrell. Any discussion?
She's better off.
Well, I think her role is easy. The public comments. Those in favor say aye. Opposed, same. We are adjourned. We'll now go into the work section. Agenda. Katie, do you have anything at this time?
No, I wish I had codification for you, but I don't.
Okay, well, it's coming.
If they tell me.
Okay, well, that's about all you can do. What do you...
Yeah, I... My suggestion, next time this comes around in the next... I mean, we want to do this more frequently than we have. Just to maybe look at somebody else to do it. It's going to cost a little more money, but the LEED's been at this for almost three years.
Yeah.
And it's just taking too long.
Yeah, there's companies out there that they'll update it instantaneously. You send them an ordinance and they'll update it. I mean, they're probably pricey, but even if we do it once a year or something like that, if we can find it.
It really is a helpful tool to have an updated code because I...
Well, we understand the importance. Like I say, we may we get it set up on the schedule once we get it, and then we go after again. Okay?
That's all.
Glenn, you have anything at this time?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Sort of in defense of the LEED, they're tied up with the legislature right now as they're back in session and all that. So, that's what their attorneys are doing. They're across the street. They're dealing with all kinds of legislation that's been coming out. So, that pretty much puts our project on hold until they're done with that session, which that may drag on until May or June or whatever. So, I wouldn't expect anything until sometime this summer then on our codification. That holds true. Anyway, John White is here tonight to talk about following up on the goal setting. He was going to be here a couple of meetings ago, but got caught in a snowstorm on his way up here, so we delayed him until tonight. The downtown rehab project, we had a quarterly meeting with the people in Department of Commerce on that, and they pronounce that 55 percent complete right now. July 31st is the deadline on that project. So, they're moving along on that, and we're going to meet with them here this week, talk about the electric installation on that. So, that's moving along. The comprehensive plan has been a little bit delayed. The planning commission will meet on the 24th, but the way they're going to approach this is they're going to come back and make some corrections. I think they're going to be minor corrections, but they will have another hearing on the comprehensive plan after talking with the city attorney as far as how this should go. I think if there's any changes to the plan, we should publish it, put it on our website, make it available, have another hearing, which will mean another 20 days, which means we'll probably be pushed back until May, when they finally actually make a final decision on the comprehensive plan, and that'll be coming to the council by that point. So, puts us a little bit behind on that. Like, so we already discussed the codification. Brad was here to talk about the runway. K-14, it's all about the easements at this point. We're ready to go on our end. We just need to get the easements nailed down. And we have started work up there on the Silver Fox or the North Campus up there. Our guys have started work on that, started some dirt work as far as the street goes. We met at a pre-construction conference with a contractor here a couple of weeks ago, and they were talking about coming here in April to start, but with the weather being as good as it's been for construction, I know we need some rain, but it's been great for outdoor work. They may give here even a little bit earlier than that. Just in a couple of notes here, CHOPCO is having their grand opening on the 27th of this month. We're replacing the store that ALCO was in, and we do, as we noted before, have the home show here in the municipal building here on this Saturday. Coming up, that'll be nine to four. So, lots of stuff going on.
Always good.
Whatever, yeah.
Nice to have CHOPCO.
Yeah.
Lloyd? I'm way behind on this. I'm the last one I see that Heather's going on a CARL mission.
She's gone.
And, really, so it's April 16th.
I know. No, I'm...
She left early.
She left, yeah. She left today, or yesterday. Sorry.
She was spending the day in London, yeah.
Ah, yeah. Yeah, they're gone, and then they're going, yeah, she's going to be gone by March 16th. Sorry about that.
And...
No, I'm going. I'm going.
Can you hear me? What CARL is?
It's the Kansas leadership that she's... I have not been through it myself, so I don't know what it's called.
It's been going on for the last, probably, 25 years.
She's our city's communication director. It's her job to bring new businesses to town, and it's a great networking tool that she can meet with state leaders and network. She goes on international trips, and it's all tied into bringing business connections to Lloyd, I think. I think it's...
It's a lot like...
A lot of it is sponsored.
It's a lot like leadership in county only on a state level, and it's a two-year program. And the kind of ends... It's a big finale as an international trip, so that's what she's...
They always go on an international...
This is her second year, isn't it?
India, South Africa, whatever, West Africa.
And what does this program cost?
It costs us anything. You have to qualify for it. It's paid through. I'm not sure...
Agricultural leadership.
Yeah, I'm not sure where they get their funding from.
She pays out of her own pocket. Their leadership businesses contribute money toward it too.
Yeah. They come around and hit businesses up. They have people who are associated with CARL, and people pass participants, and they come and ask businesses for donations to help fund these people.
It costs about $20,000 to put them through, according to their website. It's the Kansas agricultural and rural leadership is what CARL stands for.
Jack Lundquist out of Manhattan started this program about 25 years ago, I think, or something like that.
All the ag associations sponsor it. I just want to say...
If everything goes according to oil, soon as Mike starts street up there, we're going to get rain.
He already does a whole, buried a box, so I don't...
But I mean, getting ready for the...
Yeah, got to get the concrete out. We bury it.
Okay, John, would you come up and talk?
Yes, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. I apologize. It was funny, because I talked to Glenn. It was about a three-and-a-half hour drive from Bupeka to Salina, but I got about five miles west of Avoline, and it was totally dry. And when I called Glenn, I was doing about 40 miles an hour on the interstate, wondering if I was going to get home that night. And so, I said, Glenn, I think we've got... I don't know what's going to happen, but we better hold off. He said, well, it's kind of sunny here. Are you sure it's going to stay that way? So, I appreciate you. What I like to do is just... Everybody, yeah, everybody just... Is just kind of get back and touch base. I don't see this being a long session. But first of all, what do you see as you look back? What do you as the most exciting thing that's happened this last year in Lloyd? Lloyd, do you want to start us out?
I would if I knew this was going to be.
What was it? As you look and think about all that's gone on this last year, what are you the proudest of, the happiest about? You know, did you say, you know, hey, we really made progress here this year?
Well, I'm happy.
I mean, to me, Dollar General willing to build a new building up there on the North Campus, and more of those lots being sold up there.
I'd agree. I think we're moving along very well on the North Campus development. I think that's a highlight.
I'll echo what Matt says, you know, with the going to do the whole project all at once and get completed, and the fact that we was able to... CHOPCO thought enough of our community to come in and invest, and our community is just great to make up for the loss of the ALCO stores. You know, those are some really big things, you know, a loss but a gain, and so...
And I think they're only doing that in three or four of those ALCO. Is it three?
Three, three.
And they run a pretty good operation, the places that I've run across.
Well, we got new Sonic, and we're getting new Casey's, and I think for us, you know, we got beyond the talking stage for a lot of major projects that we're now engineering and getting ready to do, like the streets up there.
Tony?
We're getting started. Started, maybe, possibly, on water treatment.
Yep.
Or at least in that direction.
Well, we got it in the budget to put in some sidewalks and boards. It hasn't been advertised yet, but I hope it gets that way.
Get it down. The momentum's there. Rick?
No comment this time.
Okay.
We got another one.
Yeah. We got a lot of housing money coming in for finally being able to get rid of some dilapidated housing and some home improvement stuff. We just haven't been meeting them.
Well, then, I echo that again, the new windows and the facilities on Main Street, the rehab of those old buildings, you know, took a lot of work from the city staff to get those grants.
And I think when you go back and look, and some of it's not just last year, but over the last three or four years, that North Campus has been a really major focus. You know, you had something come in, and you said, we've got an opportunity, what can we do with it? And you're making that opportunity happen, and I think that's really big. We've talked a lot about the downtown, you know, and I know there's been times where you said, you know, what can happen? A lot of it is the private sector, but you knew, and all of a sudden, you get a grant. And my guess would be, you'll see off of that, they'll start being other stuff happening downtown just because of one building. One of the things that really got me, and again, we've talked about growth a lot, and when you think about Dollar General expanding, Casey's expanding, CHOPCO coming in, and the Sonic, what it tells me is that people were looking at Lloyd and saying, this is a place to be, and it's also a place to grow. And I think that's... As you know, you talk to your neighbors, the communities around you, and you... And as you know, I've been working with some places out west, and I don't know how many communities, if they had this much going on, would be really, really excited about The housing thing, and I want to... There was an article in the Salina paper, and I saw that, and I thought, you know, I don't know how you got that grant, because again, looking at those lots and those places, and how do we address some of the houses that we've had problems with? So, much of what you've been talking about over the years has really been moving forward, and I think that's often positive. One of the questions, and I'm going to... So, you'll know, I don't have a vested interest, but I have an involvement. With the Institute for Civil Discourse and Democracy, they are facilitating 26 water meetings around the state. And I'm affiliated with them, and I'm helping. I'm being belligerent two weeks, because there's a water meeting going on now. And it may be, talk about timing being right. The state is looking for all kinds of things, and I know, I've been talking to Glenn in the past, I think there's a million-dollar grant that's been available if they see consolidation of water districts and communities and all. You might want to really not only keep your eye open, but you may want to talk to the water office and ask them if you could come up with a creative idea as a showcase and get extra funding to do something that ties in. I was in... Last week, I was in Liberal and Garden at a couple of water meetings, and I think the state is finally really committed to stepping up to the water issue. And part of why the water meetings are going on, and this is my interpretation, I don't think the water department probably said it this way. They put out an early draft last year of a plan, and it was a... One plan fits everybody. It was a statewide plan, and it ended up that nobody, they didn't get any positive response other than a few people that it affected personally. Everybody was opposed to that plan, and so the water department said, we've got to look at this differently. And this is why they've broken down into 26 water districts, and they're looking, and each one of those water districts is developing a set of, this is what for our area we need. And so, just, and as I said, I'm kind of out of taking another role that I'm involved in and just sharing that with you, that you may see over the next six to 12 months that the state may become very receptive, and with your water issues and how you're looking at them and trying to figure out what else is going on, it might be a great time to get the state involved at a different level. Because that's probably the first time I ever came up here. That was the first issue that we talked about, and it's one that, you know, has been out there. So, that would be a thought that you might want to think about if you're going forward. Is there anything that you look, and the things that you've wanted? We talked about water. I guess one thing in looking at all of the projects, I mean, I got a copy, just when you think about the Silver Fox estate, the North Campus, the streets going in, East Main getting ready in the next couple of years, water system, the electrical system upgrades, housing grant, moving forward on the comprehensive plan, business expansion. Now, there's just, you've got a lot going on, but is there... And the one thing probably was talked about the most maybe had to do with personnel. Do you see, you know, what's your comfort level with where we're going long-term with health and personnel and people to handle, and kind of succession plans as some of the departments grow? Are you... Is that still something that we probably need to be talking about?
Me personally, I think that we need to focus on making our city a more appealing place to work, but that's conflicted with our also, our desire to keep costs down, and we've been struggling with that. And some of the cost control measures we've talked about are not necessarily popular with staff, and it's just going to be one of those touchy morale issues.
Yeah. Yeah. Anybody else have any thoughts on...
What was your last comment, John? I had a question, but your comment you just made, you wanted any questions on...
Dealing with staffing and long-term planning, and again, when you see growth going on, the other thing that it does, and my general opinion from our last couple of years' discussion, is you're not staff-heavy. You don't have a lot of extra staff out there. People aren't, you know, waiting for a job. Everybody's pretty busy. And so, as you go forward, is this something that needs to kind of move up a little bit on the focus area?
Well, I don't see that. My question was going to be to you as forward, realtor.
You got it.
Does Saline County have county-wide zoning?
What we do in Saline County, the county has a planning and zoning city. They are two separate entities. We have, though, in Salina, we have a five... I think a three-mile radius. And we don't have... I mean, we can't tell somebody they can't do something, but we have some control so that there's that space between truly rural and city, that there's a way to blend it. And so, the city most... I think right now in Kansas, probably all of your cities over 10,000 are doing that.
Well, see, we're working on the comprehensive plan. Part of it's that ETJ, and it's been a big conflict or something. I don't think it's going to change anything, but how effective do you think that's been in the growth of Salina, that you have that zoning capability? I mean, Salina's growing. We're not going to grow like that.
Yeah.
But if you've got county plus city, if you're effectively... They have their own planning and zoning and everything, right?
What it's done for Salina as much as anything is, it says that if somebody's coming up and there's a choice piece of land within that three miles, all of a sudden, they don't come in and break that into five-acre lots, and all of a sudden, you lose right next to your city boundary, you know, four or 500 acres that is where building and whatever kind, whether it's business growth or industrial or residential growth, you don't lose that. And that's a lot of why we've done it, is because there were some rural developers, and if they can get on the major blacktop closer to town, they can ask more for those five-acre lots, but all of a sudden, it takes it out of the... It takes it out of potential growth in Salina because of our floodplain and some other issues. And there's some areas we know is never going to have housing growth or very unlikely. And so, that's why it becomes real critical for us. We were concerned that if a choice piece of property... Because we... I don't know, there's some communities that annex before they need something, and they go out and they annex for growth. We don't do that, and I don't think you do either. So, because we don't annex, it's a real concern if somebody comes up and, you know, puts in a dairy farm or puts in a feedlot or comes in and takes a choice piece of property. And so, that's why we have that three-mile line.
I think my main question that seems to be here, has there been any negative impact to those people in that three-mile zone as far as being zoned?
I know of none. And when we did it, we had people who were convinced that something bad was going to happen. They still own their property. They still have the right to sell it if they want to. It's just there's some things that, you know, they could sell their property, and they could sell it to a developer, but if they sell it to the developer, they've got to follow some standards and some codes.
So, if they want to build a building or add on to their house...
Oh, yeah.
They don't have to come to the...
No, 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 they don't come to the... They don't come to the city plan.
And you don't affect their taxes?
No.
That's a county issue.
That's a county issue, and that's why sometimes you'll see somebody... And I mean, this may not be exactly right, but I think... We've got one place where a farmhouse comes in like this, it's the city, and the individual sold his property on both sides for development, but he didn't want to be in the city. So, it kind of, there's a spot where we go, you know, have it cut out, and we couldn't tell him that he had to go into the city, because that's his authority. That's my understanding, and I'm not very deep on this, so I may be telling you something that's not quite right. You know, your attorney could probably tell you better than I do, but I know in Salina...
Well, I read there's some decision about the housing development. They think they're building too many houses, and they're all look-alike, or what's up with that?
What's happening there is, and I want to say this correctly so that somebody can... We have a couple of city commissioners who would really like to see infill take place. We, in Salina, traditionally, if somebody is going to put in an addition, we put in the utilities, water sewer and roads, and we bond those, and then they're paid for by the developer.
Right.
We have some commissioners right now that said, if we quit bonding those, all of a sudden, and this is my interpretation, some of those folks will come in town and buy lots of them.
Empty lots, yeah.
But the empty lots, you know, if I'm building a $250,000 home, or even in today's environment, starter, if I'm building 120,000 to 150,000 or 180,000 homes, I'm not going to stick those one by one in areas where there's $60,000 homes now. I believe in Salina will probably be, have an impact on the election this year, those two different views. And that's what's happened there, is they're not trying to put a stop, in a sense, but they're taking away the city's ability. They'll not do bonds for utilities right now.
How long has your three-mile thing been in force?
I would... No, during the 80s. I know when I was on the commission, starting through 94, we did a new comprehensive plan, and it was discussed. I believe it was already in place, but it was discussed, do we want to keep that? And I don't know how long in Kansas they've been able to do that. I don't...
It went back a long time.
In the 50s or 60s, they started doing that?
Well, I don't want to beat this to death, but as you go...
I know they put feedlot in out here. They wanted to put feedlot in each of the Plum Creek out there, or West Plum Creek, and they had to move it out because the people didn't want it.
Do you have any idea around the state, what percentage of cities our size of figure have at the ETJ?
I would say cities over 5,000, probably 90 percent.
Really?
And again, that is strictly off the top of my head, but I know a couple of cities that are more recent, comprehensive plans, they're all in it, because...
You can actually look at the Kansas Association of Counties. They actually do have that implemented. I don't know what the county is, but you can see which individual cities have...
There are some rural counties way out west, I think, where they try to stand with you. But even there, I think probably Goodland and Colby have probably done it now.
Well, I thank you. There's just been a lot of, I think, confusion more than...
Well, and then part of the issue is, am I giving up something? And it's hard to explain to somebody that, no, you're not, when they're thinking, but wait a minute, somebody else has quote rights to say what I can do, but those rights are really pretty limited, but it just... If you were a community that said, we're probably going to get smaller over the years, I don't think it would be an issue. You're probably... For your size, you probably have as big a drawing of any community in the state of this size as far as in draw. I mean, when I think about north and west, a lot of those people would much rather come here than go to Concordia or go down to Hayes or elsewhere. I think, you know, you get an awful lot of that business, and because of that, you're going to be... You're going to be growing.
Well, I didn't mean to drag you out, but I think, you know, you've got a lot of experience, and I...
Well, you have to, you know, you get around enough, but that would be my thought.
That's what I heard, you've been around, but I wanted to say that.
Anything else right now, as you look back over the year, that... And sometimes it's a good thing that you have the outsider here, and, you know, if there's something, you say, you know, don't know why this hasn't moved forward, is something that we like to have moving, and, you know, you can direct it to me, but at the same time, staff gets a chance to hear that, you know, here's something that we probably ought to be thinking about moving forward.
Looking at this, John, I think we really need to address employee morale, because I see a lot of things here, and I have trouble comprehending, and if that image is out there, we need to do something about it.
Yeah.
I don't know what method we use, but if our employees feel this way, we need to get it across to them, and we do support them.
Yeah, and I think, you know, that's, as so much of the stuff that you have looked at, there's not, very seldom is there a quick fix. And I think, you know, that's, as so much of the stuff that you have looked at, there's not, very seldom is there a quick fix. You know, as I said, we started talking about water, you know, the day that you picked up the, the, Salina's north, you know, you started on, it was a step-by-step thing, and I think that's probably what your employees would like to see, is just, are there some little steps starting to take place? And so, one of the things, as you start planning and looking towards the future, that may be something that you want to have a more in-depth discussion about, what, you know, what are some things? You know, what's other communities doing, how are we, how are we looking at, and what can we do? Sometimes even get some of your employees' ideas, you know, let them know, you know, we can't listen to everything, but maybe do a question here, what are the five things that would have the biggest impact?
I'd like to say, and ask that, if we have our retreat...